All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, move into executive session and return very shortly. Or the other one, need to read item number two, please.
Number two, update on negotiations. One, East Providence firefighters, IAFF, local 850. International Brotherhood of Police Officers, local 569.
Same motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, be right back.
No, it's time. We have to. Call the meeting back through order reconvene. There are motion.
Shouldn't we reconvene?
And.
Seal again, seal the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Council Vice President Rego to reconvene tonight's meeting and seal the minutes.
Second.
Executive session was seconded by Councilman Fogarty and also Councilwoman Souza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Solicitor, would you?
Yes.
Read the results.
So as you know, we met an executive session to discuss and vote on the tentative agreement with Council 94 AFSCME, Local 3223. There was discussion about the tentative agreement which the council received. The vote to approve was four to one with Councilman Lawson voting no in the negative because he felt he did not, and he can speak for himself, but I don't, he felt he didn't have enough time to review the.
I just received a contract today and there's no way I could vote for something. I didn't have a chance to read.
Okay, so that's, that's all that was, was done. Madam Clerk, could you continue the meeting, the next item?
Consent calendar, council journals, regular meeting minutes, August 19th, 2025.
It's your pleasure. There are motion to approve?
A motion to accept.
Motion by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Lawson, who accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Hmm.
The ayes have it. Next item?
Licenses for discussion and possible vote.
Is there a motion to bundle first? The, how many?
I'll make a motion to bundle, C1 through C9.
Motion by Councilman Lawson to bundle the motions through nine, want C1 through nine. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor of the bundling?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion next?
Make a motion to approve C1 through C9.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lawson to approve, seconded by Councilman Fogarty, C1 through nine is listed. Docket, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, next.
There are three reading only for block parties for August 24th. It was Diego Contreras, Kevin Palumbo, and John Fuzek.
Thank you.
Thank you for reading that. Those have already happened. Next item?
Communications, Nicole Grant, discussion and possible action on backyard hen ordinance.
Yes, Nicole present, please come forward. Hi, just give you a name and address for the record.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Like your earrings. Good evening. My name's Nicole Grant. I live at 47 North Hall Street. I'm here this evening representing not just myself, but the many East Providence residents.
You gotta speak into the, right into the mic. Thank you.
I'm here this evening to represent not just myself, but the many East Providence residents who want to see a balanced ordinance that allows backyard chickens while protecting our community. Since the last council meeting, when we last discussed this issue seven weeks ago, 21 residents in Ward Four have submitted letters, letters of support to their council representatives. 19 residents in Ward One have done the same. Our petition has now reached 639 signatures. Of those, 296 are East Providence registered voters. 193 from Riverside, 78 from East Providence, and 34 from Rumford. What we're asking for isn't radical, it's regulated. And when we are ready to be, and we are ready to be proactive in addressing every concern that has been raised. First concern, rat. It's been made painfully clear to me that most people who oppose this idea are concerned about wildlife. Yes. When humans decide to remove natural wildlife habitats, it forces animals like birds, rodents, and insects into residential areas, which can lead to spikes in pest problems around homes and yards. And here's the reality, those wild animals exist with or without backyard chickens. They're attracted to trash, outdoor pet food, bird seed, compost piles, and even unsecured recycling bins. If the presence of wildlife alone were enough to make something illegal, would we also ban bird feeders? Penalize untidy yard, mandate that all pets stay indoors. An ordinance will proactively combat wildlife concerns and set the standard for responsible ownership by requiring proper feed storage in sealed containers to avoid attracting wildlife, secure coops, and enclosed runs that keep rodents and predators out, routine cleaning to prevent odors and flies, and you guessed it, rat. And of course, no roosters, which eliminates noise complaints. And if an ordinance is passed, we're ready to partner with the city to provide education and community support so every hen owner meets these standards. A copy of our proposed curriculum is included in the paperwork that I've provided, and the content would be implemented by East Providence resident Lorna Steele. She's a former director of humane education at the Rhode Island SPCA and has taught animal care and welfare to over 5,000 people each year, rehabilitated wildlife, and worked as both a veterinary technician and longtime pet care provider. Another concern. At the July council meeting, someone brought up the 2025 CDC Salmonella outbreak linked to backyard poultry as a way to scare the public into thinking this is a common occurrence. So let's address it with the facts. The outbreak sickened 187 people across 42 states, hospitalized 42, and caused one death. This concern is valid. It's also exactly why regulation is the answer. By keeping ownership illegal, East Providence will be driving flocks underground, leaving zero opportunity for education or enforcement. The 2025 CDC Salmonella outbreak linked to backyard poultry provides that the real danger comes when flocks are kept without oversight or education. In East Providence, the choice is not between having or not having chickens. It's between hidden, unregulated flocks versus legal permitted flocks with clear health and sanitation standards. An ordinance protects families, children, and neighbors by requiring the very CDC safety measures that prevent outbreaks. And importantly, this was just one outbreak among many. Some cases over the last few years include cucumbers, raw milk and cheese, and pet reptiles. Salmonella spreads when animals aren't properly cared for. Regulated backyard chickens means clear rules for safe feeding, housing, and hygiene. The goal here is not to eliminate risk entirely, it's to manage it responsibly. We're not just asking for change, we're offering solutions. Another concern. Some people have suggested that chickens are easier to control while they're illegal. Yes, you heard that, right? And it was said by an elected official, no less. The claim that quote, "Currently, the city has the ability to quickly deal with these irresponsible owners." If they were legal, then the irresponsible owner can appeal a decision and the public health concern remains until the court weighs in. This statement exaggerates the risk and ignores the city's real power to protect public health. Fear doesn't fix problems, but rules and enforcement does. As of right now, the city can only say you're breaking zoning law. It can't actually fix the problems. If hens were legalized, the city could set clear rules, fine irresponsible owners, and even revoke permits when necessary. Legalization gives the city more authority to act, not less. Throughout the last few months, many East Providence residents are finding that instead of listening, their representative shuts down dialogue, leaving people feeling dismissed and misrepresented. A reminder to everyone. Elected office is about representation. It's not about personal preference or anecdotal fears, it's about listening to constituents and being guided by facts. Let me remind you of those facts. Out of the 296 East Providence registered voters in support of this ordinance, 193 of them are from the 02915 zip code, which Ward Four is mostly made up of. That is approximately 65.2% of all East Providence support. When a large majority of the people in your own ward ask for progress, that's not just feedback, that's a mandate for reconsideration. To ignore, to ignore this is to say, "I hear you, but I will not represent you." Thank you to the council members taking us seriously on this. We ask you again tonight, let the facts guide you, let your constituents be heard, and trust that with a responsible ordinance, East Providence can move forward, not backwards on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on the? Next item?
Public comment, Gideon Finerty.
Yes, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Gideon Finerty, and I live at 115 Riverside Drive. I am here to speak about the chicken ordinance. One reason this ordinance is better for East Providence is that it will help keep chicken coops safer and more sanitary. Many people ha, will have chickens anyway, no matter what happens. But if a legal pathway is made, people can publicly offer resources, meaning it will create a cleaner and safer environment for both us and the chickens. Another reason is that it will prevent people from putting out complaints for things that have nothing to do with owning chickens. Lastly, owning chickens helps people financially. By being able to save money on eggs has helped my family and other families a lot. There were no problems when we had chickens in Smith Hill, Providence, warehouses are closer together, so I don't know why there are any here. Thank you.
Thank you, Gideon.
Esther Finerty.
Sorry, repeat the name.
Esther.
Is Esther present? Okay. Come on up, Esther. Just go over to the microphone if you can reach it. You can, you can bring that mic down to her. Just be careful of the wires.
All right. What's your name?
She doesn't have to give her name. You can just, you can say who she is and.
Is it okay if I read this for her?
Sure, you can.
Says, "Hi, my name is Esther. Why we need chickens. Chickens help us provide eggs and they are like family to us. I have a chicken named Pixlist. She has just started laying eggs and she has been a really good chicken. An even better chicken as I watch her grow. I have had chickens all my life and they are really important to me and my family. Thank you."
Nicely said, Esther. Thank you.
Paige.
Paige had to go to bed, but I have her.
Sure, you can read, you can read it. Paige had to do her homework.
Paige does not do homework. We're trying. It says, "Hi, my name is Paige Finerty. I think chickens should be legal because they provide eggs and other foods. Also, my chickens are my emotional support animals. Their names are Pixlist, Oreo, Leo, and the Mindys. Thank you for letting me speak here today."
Thanks.
That was the last one who signed up?
Okay, thank you, speakers. You have to sign up ahead of time or, next item, please.
Council members, one, request for update from administration on Willet Pond upgrades, Councilman Lawson.
Councilman Lawson, please.
Uh, just looking for an update. Been told that we're waiting on DEM approval. And just want to see where we're at with that.
Good evening, council president, members of the council. Um, in regards to the request on an update for Willet Pond, um, the city is waiting, as you mentioned, on DEM approval still. Once we do get that approval, the contractor's already prepared to mobilize. Um, the intent is to pave the parking lot this year. Of course, it's always, it's subject to DEM sign off, so no change on that one.
So, we've been waiting for a DEM for over a year, well over a year. Is anybody picking up the phone? Is anybody trying to shake the tree?
Of course, we, we do that with all projects, but there's, there's only so much that we can do. We're limited. We make phone calls and we, there are multiple projects. We're working with the DEM on several different projects and, um, but this.
We have an issue with the state DEM. If we're waiting this, we had to wait a year for a sign at Watchmogu Square. Over a year for redo a parking lot, so, okay, thank you.
And I think, you know, the, the concern is valid, but it's also valid that DEM, CRMC, they move at slower than molasses pace.
That's my point. We have a problem with our state.
And, and multiply it times the other 38 or so communities in the state that are all screaming about slow DEM. I, I was involved years ago, maybe 30 years ago, just trying to build a garage and there was more than, I had enough room to build a house. I just wanted to put a little garage. It took nine months just to get a, a worker from the state there to say, "Yes, you can do it." Uh, it's, so I, I don't think it's a problem here with, with anybody at City Hall, but speaking about the pond, what about the, um, the, the water fountains? I know, I've been hearing that the color's not working, is that?
I drove by yesterday, it was green.
Is it working now?
By again, it was red.
The first one, it's like this high.
One is very low.
Three or two. When I drove by just last night, if they were like shooting up, they were red and green and.
No, no, the water today, it's only going like this high. So I think there may be some blockage, maybe some leaves or something.
Yeah, no, I mean, not just something.
The colors are fine.
Oh, I thought you meant like it.
Low.
Oh, yeah, well, I did say the colors, because for a while they weren't, but they're back, I guess. Okay. It's not, not major issue. Yes, go ahead, Councilman. Was there something else?
No, it's just.
Oh, okay.
You gotta get in DM's ass. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Well, number two is also for you.
Which one is that?
Discussion on cameras in public spaces.
So.
Councilman Lawson.
This came up. We got this beautiful new troll. We've had a new mural at Crescent Park. So I just want to present it to the council if there's any appetite to even start a conversation with Chief Reposa about cameras in our public spaces. I'm not talking every inch of everything, but we put a lot of money, the opera funding we had, and we're invested in these parks and playgrounds, fields. And I'd be damned if we're gonna let knuckleheads ruin it. And I think these cameras, now, they're investigative, only for investigation, they're not enforcement. You're not gonna get a ticket for littering. But if there is an appetite with this council, I think we should start the discussion with the police department on utilizing cameras in our public spaces.
I, I would support that. I think in the year 2025, everything is on film, everything is on a camera. You, you can't watch nightly news, local or national, without seeing someone who maybe had their, their car hit in their driveway or an Amazon package stolen from their porch. And what is the first thing they do? Run around the neighborhood. Who's got a camera? Who saw it? Who can I look at? I mean, we obviously don't want. I mean, we obviously don't want cameras in personal spaces.
Absolutely not, no.
But public murals, the bike path where we have done extensive work, yeah, I think we-
We just invested one and a half million at Kent Heights. I'd hate to see damage there and not being able to find the culprits.
Right, so, yeah, we can, I'll ask the mayor's office if we can, a couple of us can start a conversation with the chief of police and-
Yeah, I, to the chair.
Yes, Councilman Fogarty.
It's very important, I've mentioned it more than once, and over the last couple of years. It's to hold accountability for what we invested in. I mean, let's face it. And security and safety, I'm big on for seniors, that's why the, you know, I get joked upon, including Mr. Rigo coming behind me about the bathrooms, but I'm a senior with eight grandkids, and we have to go, we have to go. So the bathrooms was a push, security is a push, and then you hold those accountable. Behind Martin, they had a biker do a lot of damage. We caught him on film, and the parents had to pay. You have to pay. So, I'm agreement. I already talked to Councilman Lawson way before this, and I've mentioned it to Roderick and others, I, you know, I'm a big fan of that and other things for safety, but, yes.
So, councilwoman.
So I think, I know this came up multiple times. I think initially, when I had discussed this, it was at Pierce Field, because they had just done the basketball courts about eight years ago, almost. And they, yeah, it was destroyed. And so the bathrooms were being done over, so there was a lot of stuff happening at Pierce Field with renovations. And the thought was that, you know, we need to do some protection in that area, and then it expanded to other parks like Central Ave that had a lot of violence or, you know, near tragic incidences, dangerous violent incidences that were happening. And in a way, to be able to capture some of that was to have the surveillance there, and that would hopefully also deter anybody from doing things, along with capturing any behavior that we needed to monitor. So that's something that I've always been on board with. Towny Pride Park was an area too, when it was just finished, that they wanted, neighbors wanted it to be monitored and even volunteered to be able to use their Wi-Fi off of a camera that would be mounted on the wall. So I think there's a lot of new technology that we can use, solar, you know, about ways of how to bring to these remote locations, like the troll location, where there might not be power lines over there, and how are we gonna get electrical service. There were workarounds, so I am open to working with any council member on coming up with some type of an ordinance, maybe, and then some allocation.
Well, we got, we're about to start the budget process, so I know it's very early, we're not gonna, but we may want to consider preparing for something like that.
We definitely do. I mean, especially up in the first ward now with the soon-to-be completed new pickleball courts at Barn Park, as well as the basketball court there. And then at Glen Line with the new basketball court, the tennis court, and the pickleball courts. The investment that we, as a city, using the opera money, but it's still investment of taxpayers' money, that it is, we need to do something with the security part, because look at what happened down at Kent Field, you know. Couple of days later, they're, you know, they're on, they're on their bikes, you know, scratching their way, skidding, I should say, and it's not right for the people who need to use them. And that's my concern with the new pickleball courts and tennis courts.
So obviously, all of the council, and something we've all been interested in, and I think most right-thinking people in the community agree. So I would ask the chief of staff, if you could just start a conversation rolling with whomever, the mayor, the police chief, get in touch with me, I'll get in touch with the council.
Mayor's on board. Mayor's already aware.
Sure, I'm sure he is.
He wants the same safety that we-
And see if we can come up with some surveillance system throughout the city. Thank you all. Next item?
Number three, request for accurate update on when the field behind Riverside Middle School can be used, Councilman Lawson.
So, I've been asked numerous times. Tricia, you said the fall, but I'm, and people saying that they were chased off by DPW workers, saying it's not gonna be ready till next year. So is there an accurate, when is this field gonna be finally available, that kids and the school can start using it?
So, Councilman, we did, I did respond, I'm not sure if you received my emails to yourself.
I did. You said you weren't sure that somebody would have said that, but I'm-
No, I think-
Multiple people saying that they were told that.
I gave a very detailed explanation, and also to the superintendent, in terms of what was happening at the field, but I'll reiterate, just so that it's on record. So currently, the field is currently open. Students are using it. We have no knowledge of kids being kicked off the field, but right now, it's currently open for use by the school for gym activities. There's no issue with that and other events. Practices in formal games, and this is what I was including, which will put additional strain on the field, those will be permitted beginning in the spring. Currently, from what I understand, the games are being permitted and played at Pierce, currently. Now, but the park staff have gone to fertilize the field, and what they're doing, from what I understand from the director, is that they're core aerating, they're overseeding to provide a better grass surface. So I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't work in this area, I'm not a grass engineer, I don't work on surfaces, but the point of it is they're trying to fill the small depressions and creating a better, stronger field. So as of right now, come spring, they'll be able to play, but no students are being kicked off for like light play or gym activity on the field.
So the email I got from you was, as I understand it, kids have been on the field, I can't imagine them being kicked off unless there was work being conducted.
Yep, then I, there was a follow-up email, and the superintendent.
Well, I bet what happened, Councilman and Chief, is that the kids who may have been asked to get off the field, or what we used to call sandlot kids, these are probably kids on their own.
They were just playing, yeah.
But the school can use it right now, and they are using it. So I think it's two kids running around, which is harmless, they, I did that, we all did that at fields, but until that grass gets thick and, well, yeah, you, so those probably the kids that are reporting.
Spring for the full seeding, but the schools can use it now.
Schools can use it now, and that parking lot has been done, and I wish the youth groups using the field, I went by there today.
We need enforcement, the signs are up, no parking, people are still parking.
Right, they're parking on the side streets, bother, you know, where homeowners can't get in or out of their driveways, and two cars can't pass. So if anybody's watching who's involved in those sports, specifically the junior townies, these are the young kids, not the school teams, and people are just parking all over the place. There's a big parking lot behind Riverside Middle School, and you gotta walk about 100 yards, that's all, and you get to the Al Santi complex. So we need to get that word out, and the police have to start ticketing cars there.
And we've been keeping the superintendent and Dan Carpenter in the loop as well, I just sent them-
Yeah, but it's not the school people now, we're talking about the youth groups at night.
No, 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 as well, so we, we're also, we're keeping them in the loop in terms of what's happening and the fact that they're limited, they could host limited games, and they would, it would benefit from late use. We're talking about the field, we informed that the field isn't 100% ready for junior townies and EPYSAs, strong games.
They're not talking about the fields now, he's talking about the parking problem.
Oh, the parking issue, I'm sorry, I'm still on the field.
That's okay. All right, we're good. Next item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, saving point cleanup, Councilman Lawson.
Just want to give a shout out and thanks. Save the Bay came, they did a cleanup, about 30 residents showed up. I went out there with them, and beautiful, it's just a beautiful park. Hopefully, we can start making some progress. There's some disappointment in the way the park's looking, but the folks that came out, I want to express the gratitude that, and they're awesome, they just, they care about the beauty of it, and we collect it. You know, it wasn't too bad, which is good, but as you know, most of the garbage is washed in, it's not people dumping, it's washed in. So I just wanted to publicly thank Save the Bay and about 30 people who showed up that day to clean the park.
Thank you. It is, it is looking good, almost there. Next item?
Number five, cell service at Crescent Park area, Councilman Lawson.
Is there a Councilman Lawson in the room?
Yeah. Patricia, on the 19th, I emailed you and Dan about cell service at the Crescent Park area. The neighborhood in the back, the residents, and even the fire department in Station 2, there's a big problem with cell service. Residents can't call 911 because the phones are cutting out. The fire department, when they get there, their radios may not fully function. I don't know the process of requesting, is it Verizon, is it, I just don't know. So if you and Dan, or if Dan, somebody can look into how we can improve coverage, because it is a public safety issue.
So, just to bring the council up to date, the city has been working with the cell carrier to install a tower within grassy plains.
No, 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 no. This is nowhere near, this is Crescent Park. The grassy plains would not affect what's going on at Crescent Park.
I believe it's going to impact that area, so-
A tower at grassy plains would give that far?
But I'm being told that there's DEM approvals that are required, carriers, legal counsel, I have all the details here, in terms of like installation date with that tower, so perhaps that tower-
Can you forward that to me, so I can take a look?
That's what we authorized back in April, correct? The, so, work in the agreement, correct?
There are some issues regarding that, but yes, we're working on it. There's been some other issues about where the tower may be located based upon the prior-
But if we did need to add cell service at the grassy plains, doesn't cover the Crescent Park area, is, I just, what is the process?
I think it's a Public Utilities Commission issue, that's, they're responsible for coverage issues. I don't think it gets involved with that.
So I'd have to bring the citizens' concern to the PUC?
I think so, yeah.
Probably.
I would recommend that they would call them and let them know.
The other thing is, you have to have a location that's high, usually they're on the public buildings, a high roof, like the top of the high schools, say, and I don't know what is in the Crescent Park, maybe the high-rise.
Harborview has one.
Not, right, but the other one.
I don't know if Crescent Park, it's not a high-rise.
I mean, right, but it's a big building.
Something can go on top of that, I just don't know. But PUC, that's the answer I needed.
Yeah.
You can't put one at the park, because right away, it's gonna be an issue with the historical society, so.
Oh, that's why I said the building.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, the Crescent Park manor. Maybe on top of the troll.
We'll put it on top of the carousel, we'll call it the Louvre Tower.
Yeah. Next item, please.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Number six, update on solar project at police station, Councilwoman Souza.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So it's been a while since I've heard, and I don't know if the council has been presented with any information on the project for the solar power, the solar-
I can answer that, because we've been, so actually, I reached out to the company back in June, wanting for an update. Apparently, the underlying lease of the, of a property where the power was going to be, there were some lease issues that had to be resolved. Chris Capizio, who we hired to help us with this, we've been working with them since June to get everything in order. I just texted him while we're having a discussion, and we're waiting for a title company to make sure the title is clear under the land. There were some other DEM, minor DEM issues that we had to go through, but we're working on it, and we hopefully have a resolution by the end of this month, and hopefully a little bit of construction. And it also, I don't think this had anything to do with it, but I think it was also from the city's perspective, we didn't move forward because of all the construction that was going on.
Inside?
Inside, you know, with the trucks and stuff, because I think they needed to park some stuff out there. But mostly, it was the developer of the solar panel that ran into some issues. It has to be an assignment of leases, and something that's a little bit over my head, particularly, but we are working on it. I did reach out to them in June, because I wanted to get an update.
And so when is the follow-up conversation, did you say?
I just got an email from, text from Chris, and he's talking with the title company, supposed to get an answer from them for the other, by the end of the week, so we can move forward, but they're still interested in moving forward.
And who's the lease with? Don't we own the property?
No, no, there's a, there's a, there's an assignment of a lease from the, where the, where the power comes from, believe it or not, there's gonna be power there.
Yeah.
But there's also, the underlying company also, we enter into a lease with the underlying company, because under the state law, we have to have an interest in the land. We have an interest in the land, obviously, at the police station, but the way we're getting the credits, we also have to have an interest in a larger project, and there was an assignment, that larger project was sold, and the leases had to be redone, and so they're coming back to us with that. It's a little confusing, I agree with you.
So we had, we were doing coverings over-
With a canopy, yes.
Right, and then we were, the company came in and wanted to partner to put-
Solar panels.
Over it.
We're gonna get a larger credit.
Right.
Reimbursement rate because of the solar panels. The company, the original company that proposed that, apparently, I don't have all the details, but apparently the underlying lease was sold to another company, so there had to be a reassignment, and when we looked at the lease-
So does that mean we have to renegotiate a contract?
No, it's gonna be the same, we just want the lease to accurately reflect what the entity is. And actually, to his credit, Mr. Capizio caught that, and that's what we've been working on.
Is there any penalty on the company's part to reimburse the city? Because we, when did we authorize that? In '23 or '20? It's '23, right?
No, I mean, we could have walked away from the project if we wanted to. The problem is, is that because of, when we sign up to it, we get a higher percentage of the reimbursement rates, because we've got the high school, the W, the Housing Authority, and the city, and that canopy, so we're gonna get a bigger credit, percentage credit, so that's why we didn't really walk away from it.
So there is a penalty for the delay, so we'll get more, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, once they come online, we will get more money from the percentage of reimbursement.
Now, this is two years that we're losing money.
It is, well, yeah.
Well, technically, not gaining money.
We're not gaining money, we're not losing money, we're not, we're not gaining as much, yes. We're not getting as much credit as we would have hoped to earlier on, that is true.
All right, thank you for the update. Madam clerk-
I'll keep you informed, yeah.
Could you put this on the agenda for the next council for a follow-up? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Number seven, update on Pierce Field walking track. Martello Park picnic tables, Hull Street Park upgrades, Councilwoman Souza.
So, I don't know, Patricia, if we have any updates on any of these projects. So I know initially, this body had allocated opera funds for a repair or replacement of the walking track. I know that project had multiple things involved. The administrator wanted to redo the grass, make it turf. Money was reallocated to another project, because the administration had said that they were going to apply for grants to get money to cover the cost of switching the funds, so we'll just take each on its own. So any update on where we are in terms of funding and getting the walking field and/or football field?
I do, councilwomen, have updates on each of the different-
Thank you.
-points here. So in terms of Pierce, if you don't mind, I'll go right through them. So in terms of Pierce Field walking track, the city is engaged currently with an engineering firm, both to design, to design the improvements that will include the new walking path with ADA accessibility, improved field drainage, and ever great, excuse me, irrigation. We will also be having space for vents to limit disruption to grass areas, and we'll be creating a more user-friendly environment for large gatherings, that was from our director. In terms of Martello-
Can I just pause you for a second? What is the engineer company that we've engaged?
I'll have to go back and check the documents. I don't know off the top of my head, I didn't include it in my notes.
And so this is just preliminary, where they're doing, getting, working on the site plan, and then moving, then proposing it to us, and then coming up with the cost?
Correct.
So it'll be coming back for this body for potential additional funds?
I'm not sure about additional funds, but I'll find out.
Okay.
Councilwoman could, Councilman Rigo, interject on Pierce?
Madam Chief of Staff, Pierce, you just said walking track. Hopefully, it stays four or five lane track that it is now, because the Martin Middle School, as well as Riverside Middle School, they use that, that's their practice and track field, so just to turn it into a regular walking path will do a dis, you know, disservice to the middle school track program. As well as, we talk about, obviously, Runcit Little League being here tonight, and other little leagues, and the soccer organization, there's also a very, in the last three or four years, there's a youth track program that has been started in this city that's been quite successful, so, and again, they don't have access to the high school, you know, complex, and that's a story for another day, but that would, you know, and we, and I even talked about needing a jump pit, I've talked with Dan about that in the back, so I just, please, don't have this engineer turn it into, you know, a walking path, because that could be one, you know, just like up at Glen Line, it's just a path. This needs to stay as a, as a middle school track field. It doesn't have to be a full high school, NCA regulation of eight track lanes, but it needs to stay as a track.
I believe that was in fact relayed during some of the meetings with the engineer.
You just said walking path, that's why I raised that concern.
Walking track. I, my mouth was in the microphone. And in terms of Martello Park, so the upgrades are near completion. The city is waiting on a new bracket for the swing set to allow for installation. In terms of the seeding, there are several long- In terms of the seating, there are several long concrete footings with wood tops, the wood will be replaced to provide improved picnic bench seating for visitors. And then in terms of the signage, there'll be general park signage that will be added to both the playground, the dog park, and then the general park area with visitor information as well. And then if you don't mind, I'd like to go on. You okay with that? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So the neighbors were excited about seeing something being done in that area, because it had been a really small neighborhood park that didn't have much attention, but now that they have started working on it, they feel that they've taken away a lot that was there, so there's less activities for the kids to play, I guess, the, the swing set or place that isn't, is less than what was already there, so there was concern that there isn't much for the children to do now at that park, especially since now there's a dog park there, and the neighborhood wasn't really looking to have a dog park in that area, though it, it's nice to have it, they, one of the things they did mention, and that's why I put it on the agenda, and I know it seems kind of really frivolous, you know, small, when you look at it, but like a picnic table, I understand that there's some seating, but if there's not going to be a lot of activity for children to do, at least have somewhere where they can sit and do activities on a table, I didn't notice where they were playing, putting any picnic tables in the area, and I think they would appreciate having, or so they have mentioned, they'd like to have some picnic tables in that area, so that they could do activities at the tables.
I'm wondering if, if the seating where they're talking about, the several long concrete footings with wood tops, if that would, because this is where they're saying that the wood would be replaced to provide improved picnic bench seating options, but you're talking tabletops.
Tabletops.
Picnic tables, so in the swing set. Okay. I'll relay that to Councilwoman, and you, where we're at with that.
Thank you.
In terms of the Hull Street Park upgrades, there are a few here, so we're adding new play equipment where the old playground was located, the vendor's currently waiting on a backordered piece, expected to arrive next week, so that's great news, with a tentative installation scheduled, tentative, for September 7th. Additional repairs to the existing newer play equipment will be made to several of the broken features, as well as, the city's currently working with EPYSA to install a perimeter guardrail to protect all the new field improvements in that area that were made. The field's expected to open for spring play, after, again, just similar to the other park, after it's aerated, top dressed and seeded, because obviously, that ends up in, with better lush grass for the kids to play on.
One of the things, so a couple of things, and thank you for these updates. One, in speaking with the mayor on this park, he did mention or suggest, because there are, so there is walking paths throughout the park, but there are certain areas, especially along the tree lines, where some of that is just dirt, so it goes asphalt, big section of dirt, asphalt, so it gets muddy puddles, so one of the things that was suggested was that we would resurface and clean up those walking paths around the area, especially since where the overhang is, a lot of that cement or asphalt is broken up and cracked, much like a lot of.
Which over by, closer to the school area?
Nope, near the park itself, so they have the canopy, where the under, you know, they don't have a picnic table over there, but that, that area behind the shed, or on the side of the little, the soccer team shed, the red shed, so in that whole general area around the park, the playground, and then the walking path goes around, like the field, it goes around the whole park. Not all of it is in disarray, but there is parts and pieces of it, correct? And so one of the things that was mentioned for safety, because a lot of people do use that area on a daily basis, which is wonderful to see, it could use some attention for the, especially when it rains. As, as it mentions to the field, so I did talk to the league, and they did mention putting up some type of a rail there, it is my understanding that the ask now has increased the fiscal amount that they're, the contribution that they're asked to make, so there was some concern that they wouldn't be able to meet what the city's ask was financially, they were only had a certain amount to donate towards that, so like to just find out more about that, if it's because material costs, or if it's because the city wants it to be longer, and they were, could only afford a smaller section, but.
And that was EPYSA, saying they can't afford, okay.
Yeah, they had a monetary amount that they could pay, and they've been asked to double that amount.
Double?
Mm-hmm, okay. So they were concerned that they wouldn't be able to come up with that, it just was too much of a strain for, for the organization. And then, in the field itself, I know it's been a long time coming, and there's been, the contractor has been great coming out continuously to, to try to help with the drainage issue, but we do still have major divots in that field, or drainage, so I don't know that that's, I'm wondering if that's going to stay that way, because my concern would be that if you're using that whole field to play soccer, now you're going into like a lull, and that's not going to be safe.
I think that.
Running across the field.
Again, I'm not, you know, a park engineer, but I think from what, from what, in having conversations with the mayor and Dan, in those areas, that's part of the reason that they want to be able to do the aeration, the top dress it, so that way, some of those divots are filled, and obviously, they wouldn't want any of the players getting hurt.
Right, right, so there's those focus areas that you're saying that they're going to work on to try to build up.
So the paths, the cost, and then the divots.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update, greatly appreciated.
Number eight, update and recommend from consultant on pedestrian crossings and lights throughout the city, Councilwoman Souza?
Thank you. So I know months, months ago, after weekly or bi-weekly conversations of concerns that I've had regarding pedestrian crosswalks, inoperable lights around the city, there was a consultant that was hired, there was a plan citywide, and last that I recall being informed, all of that data was brought together, but they weren't at a place to divulge that yet to the council, so I'd like to hear what that update is, because there are some grave concerns now with school being back in session, still having areas that don't have operable lights on main roads for children that have to now walk to school, because they're not offered a bus, is a big problem.
Correct, and you just reiterated, one of the things I was going to point out, that we did have this, this draft memo, but that I could supply to you, and then get it to the rest of the council, this outlined the framework for several different improvements and repairs. This draft, I have for reference, and I'll share this with you, but the implementation, from what I understand, in terms of an update, is the implementation and of improvements and the finalization of this draft, of this memo, will be advanced through the Federal SMART program, the grant that was awarded through the city in the coming year. So the plan is to move forward immediately with repairs to the pedestrian signal on Broadway in front of the Teachers Credit Union, as well as the pedestrian signal at the intersection of Warren Ave and Seventh Street, and Councilwoman, I'm happy to, to the clerk.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We, the process with the Federal SMART grant.
Okay.
Thank you, next item.
Number nine, request for city administration to address and support neighbors of Fort Street regarding continued damage to property, Councilwoman Souza?
Thank you. So I know probably about a month ago, there was a resident of Fort Street, Deborah Forts, who had come, Perez, I'm sorry, who had come before the council with concerns about golf balls hitting property, their vehicles, houses, garages, even almost the children that are in front of the home playing outside. So in an effort to connect with MetLife and reach out with them, I'd spoken to a couple of the managers there, and they reassured that they were changing, they had changed the hole to veer the balls in a different direction. I know at one point, there was netting that was supposed to go up to help, again, catch any strays. Unfortunately, none of that has proven fruitful for this street, even as, an hour before coming into this council meeting, a resident texted me, sitting on her front steps, getting the ball going right over her head, hitting her front door, so almost hitting her, quite frankly, right in the forehead, which had it done that, she probably would have been in the emergency room with a severe concussion, or potentially worse. Numerous pictures have been sent over the last few weeks with damage to vehicles, new, so nothing, this is.
At the old ones.
This is not old, that I've already shared, I believe they, they put it on the screen, and my council members were able to see it in my absence, so these are all new, continuous issues, and despite having had conversations with MetLife, the residents have called continuously and not been successful in getting a response, so it's, it's quite disappointing, on one end, hearing from them that we're here to work with people, we're, we're going to talk to them, and then having the resident say, nobody has responded to me, I've called and emailed multiple times, and this is what's continuing to happen. I can provide an update, if you'd like. So you're right, the council, while you're out, did discuss, based on some of the issues that you brought forth, the administration has been in constant contact with MetLinks and with the Marshals to, to bring this all to their attention. I know this body has talked about the netting, they did, they did, they were open to doing that, they do, they did, however, they couldn't put up the netting based on Rhode Island Energy's easement, but they've also reconfigured the hole, they did say that they were, the number of complaints had dropped significantly, and that they had not heard anything. I did see the email from Deb, and I am happy to report that Leon Marshall is, already has a scheduled meeting with Deb to, to discuss this with her, so, and that was as a few hours ago.
Okay, all right, so it was today that discussion?
Yes, correct, based on your.
My emails, okay, good.
Your emails, and, and there was, they were trying to reach Luke at the property, but they did say that the number of, the number of complaints or balls that have gone in that area has, has dropped significantly.
Well.
After they reconfigured it, but.
So it really hasn't, what has changed is they've decided not to reach out, because they feel like nobody's listening, so that was, and that's why I'm bringing it up again, because they have been reaching out occasionally to me, so as it gets worse or more frequent, is when I start to get the phone calls and the pictures.
Makes sense.
And so the, when I've asked, you know, have you reached out to them, have you gone over there to speak with anybody, it really is more of a nuisance, because they feel as though they go, they talk, nobody knows what they're talking about, nobody wants, you know, the response isn't great.
Right.
So then why do it, right, is what the, the feeling is from the neighbors, and that definitely should not be the feeling that they have.
Well, the good thing is, the owner is now going to meet with that resident directly.
So I'm glad that.
Get any others.
For the chair.
We're happy to facilitate.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, Councilwoman Souza, when's the last time they asked you about that?
Today, this afternoon.
Thank you.
With pictures. And that's all I had, thank you so much for the update.
Thank you, before we go on, I just want to acknowledge the presence of the chair and vice chair of the East Providence School Committee, thank them for their attendance as we continue to all work together for the city, and please continue, Madam Clerk.
Public hearings ordinance for second and final passes for discussion and possible vote. An ordinance and amendment of chapter 19 of the revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title zoning, these changes are being made in order to conform to approved Rhode Island General Assembly bills.
I think, yes, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, except.
Motion to approve by Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Council Vice President, we go, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Keith Burns is here, you want to comment? Sorry, it is a public hearing, and we'll ask for public comment when the council finishes with questions.
Sure, I do have a presentation that pretty much mirrors what was in the memo, so, here we are. I'll try to get through it quickly here, but, so as far as, we're here to consider these amendments, the zoning ordinance, which were done to comply with the General Assembly's approved land use bills from 2024. So those were approved, for the most part, to promote housing construction in the state, so towns, cities and towns across the state have to update their zoning regulations, similar to what we had to do in 2023, so that's the, just what we're doing here. Most of the changes, just insert new required language, there are a few that require some discretion, and that will be noted to you, so you know what's required, and what goes beyond that. The planning board has to review these changes, they reviewed them at their July meeting, and they found the amendments consistent with the comprehensive plan, old and new comprehensive plan, and recommended approval. And these state laws, they're, they're in effect now, and they govern local land use decisions regardless of whether the city amends its regulations. And these drafts were reviewed with the council at a May 28 workshop that we held here. The big picture for these zoning ordinance changes, we received grant funding from Rhode Island Housing to hire consultant for several things, so one of them was to develop these zoning amendments and the ones from 2023. They also worked on a draft comprehensive rewrite of the whole zoning and subdivision regulations with the goal of streamlining housing production, that's not before you tonight. We have a draft of inclusionary zoning ordinance, which was discussed at the workshop a few months ago, that's still being worked on and is not before you tonight. Draft of a transit-oriented developmental overlay ordinance, that may not be something that the city is even eligible for, and the grant with the consultant is now complete, so we're now on our own and making these changes here. As a reminder, why to promote housing opportunities, housing crisis is burdening local residents and impacting the economy and the city-state and beyond, half of East Providence renters are considered cost-burdened by Rhode Island Housing Works. Rhode Island is last in housing construction per capita, and more units of all kinds of housing are needed to dig ourselves out of the hole, and housing equals economic development for the city, to attract working age population, to sustain the economy. The most major change in these changes here is adding accessory dwelling units, this was the major change to the state's 2024 land use bill.
So I have a question on this, and you, hopefully you can clarify this. An ADU is obviously an additional dwelling on a, on a piece of, on a property, correct?
Right, an accessory dwelling unit.
So if I have my, if I have the main house on a seventh, I'm just throwing out a number, on a 7,000 square foot lot, now I take and add an additional dwelling in the back of the yard, that takes away open space on that property, correct?
It does.
Now there's a dwelling, so my 7,000 square foot lot in a 2,000 square foot house to start off with, that I have 5,000 square feet left to build.
Right.
Okay, and then, not with the frontage, and then we take away frontage, so I put a house on the back, I put a 700 square foot ADU, I'm all for it, but it's, it ties into something else here, and so that takes away open space on that property, correct? If you were measuring prop, if you were measuring space?
It does, if you build something new in the backyard like that.
Thank you.
Again, these ADUs can come in three different types, I've shown a little graphics there, there's internal ones that are just inside an existing house, ones that are built with an addition to the house, and detached ones, which can be built new, as you're talking about, or just inserted into existing garage. They represent an opportunity to add housing stock with minimal neighborhood impact, benefiting owners, renters, and various age groups.
I think this is great that the city's doing this, because, you know, hopefully it brings down the cost of living, affordable housing, first-time owners go, I mean, if it's on your property, obviously, you can subsidize your, your existing house with a rental property, and I'm glad we're in agreement that that cuts down the existence, what, what you would count as existing space. as existing space.
And we're, we're in agreement, but it's state law.
State law, no, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm just, I just wanted it to, I know, but I, what I was going through, what is, what is considered open space on that property?
Yeah, diminishes the.
It diminishes what is left for, quote unquote, yeah, open space.
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
That's what you're talking about, yeah.
Yep.
Open space connotes.
I mean, I'm, yeah, lot coverage.
Open space connotes that it's open to the public.
Yeah, I mean, lots, lot coverage.
Coverage, it does, yes. It does increase density on lots.
So, yeah, so that, that goes hand in hand with other things that can happen on that property.
So, just, I think I'm, I'm not hearing, so Council Vice President, the way this statute is, is if you have a 7,000 square foot lot, it doesn't mean you can build an ADU on that lot.
I'm not saying about that, I'm just.
You already have a pre-existing structure.
And it takes away from, it's taken away from what is left on that property. I'm all for it. I'm just talking about for other things, like putting swimming pools or sheds or anything like that. Every, now you got X amount, you got X space.
Which you always did.
Now you got less space. If you put an ADU, if you put one of these on there now.
Well, you can't just put one on. You, either it's a pre-existing structure, or if you have a $2,000, $20,000, $20,000 square foot property. If you have 7,000 square foot, you can't just add a new structure and say it's an ADU. You have to meet the state guidelines.
That's partially true, but. Yeah, that is what the. That's the state law allows, but, but as, as it's being proposed, you can put it on a 7,500 square foot lot.
That's what I'm saying.
And this, and the City of East Providence is proposing that we're able to do that?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what, that's, and I, and again, I just wanted to, my, you know, where's the?
Because I didn't see that on there.
Where's the usable?
I think he's getting to that. You're correct.
Yeah, my, you know, my other point was getting to what then is, you know, how much space is left? So, you know, we're on the same page, so.
There was discussion at the work session about the, the percentage of the, the lot size from going, so yes, I don't want to step on Keith's, because he knows this better than probably anybody in this room, but state law says you can put a detached accessory dwelling unit if you have a lot at least 20,000 square feet. Providence and Barrington, believe it or not, have eliminated that completely and went down to, you could be on a zero whatever, believe it or not. So they've gone less restricted than state law. The Planning Department and, at the work session, I think there was general discussion, because there are very few lots in East Providence that have 20,000 square feet. So the, I think the compromise or the recommendation from the Planning Department was to allow it on lots of 7,500 square feet. Right. Less for detached.
Yeah.
For new detached.
Yeah.
If you already have a garage on that property, absolutely you can convert that, like a barn or whatever, but, so that's.
So why don't you continue, Keith?
Sorry, yeah, let me turn to.
No, no, that's fine.
And the reason 7,500 was proposed is because in a lot of zones, that's the minimum you need for a duplex. So we have a lot more density than a lot of these other communities. 20,000 was the minimum in the state law, which is sort of a one-size-fits-all, governing a lot of the rural communities out there. But like the solicitor said, 20,000 is sort of hard to come by in East Providence, where it doesn't affect very many people.
So then I guess to Council Vice President's comment, what is now the zoning officer looking for for pervious coverage?
Those rules still apply, where each zone has maximum impervious coverage. So if you stick one of these in your backyard and you have more than the required maximum impervious coverage, you'll have to apply for a variance for that.
Okay.
And it's important to note that with these ADUs, you know, people still need permits to do it. You still need a building permit, you still need to meet the fire code in the building code. So you can't just stick these in your basement willy-nilly without regard to, to these concerns. You still have to meet, excuse me, you still have to meet all the setback requirements as well. So like, you know, distance from the sideline, back line, so that as well have.
Neighbors, parking.
Yep, parking is. Parking is another one that we are proposing, something that is more liberal in the state on the next slide here. It's 46 of 84, if you want to look at the. Yeah. We're proposing less parking than the state requires per the law, with the reason that a lot of residential properties in the city just don't conform to zoning's minimum parking requirements, especially in some of the more dense areas of the city. The goal here is to limit, you know, paving in stormwater runoff in these areas and make ADUs a more viable use in these areas.
Well, because an issue, I mean, even on the agenda today, we have, you know, proposal for no parking, so we're seeing more and more no parking on the streets within the neighborhoods. So we're going to be running into really a parking crisis, because you're not going to be able to park on the street, you're not going to have, you know, parking on properties, because we're not giving, people don't have one and a half cars per household. I mean, people, it's everybody in the household owns a vehicle. I mean, that's just the way, the reality of it. I don't know any household, even though you might have the e-bikes, and you probably do that on the weekend leisurely, you still have your, your car or your truck or whatever in the driveway. So I don't.
And the state's caught in Ripton, so.
So I don't know.
You can't get rid of parking without beefing up public transportation.
Yeah, the state law says that the maximum you can require for an ADU is one parking space per ADU bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
And this, what we recommend here is less than that. It is.
Motorcycle?
One additional off-street parking space shall be required for any ADU that is greater than one bedroom in size, or that is located on a property that does not meet at least 50% of the minimum required parking standard for the existing uses. All such required parking shall be provided on the premises. That's something the council can, can sit here, if we want to move on to the next.
Yeah, let's move on.
Yeah. The next slide, a lot of these laws talk about how to treat undersized lots. Every year, the state has been changing the laws to make it easier for property owners to build on undersized lots, legally non-conforming undersized lots, with a greater ability to reduce dimensional requirements for smaller lot sizes, additional modifications, additional provisions for the zone, for zoning modifications through the zoning officer. These are what I think of as mini variances, where the zoning officer can give people small relief from dimensional zoning requirements. And the state's approved bills that were just approved a few months ago this year go even further in this direction. So we'll have to revisit that in the months to come. On the next slide, another change is that the new state law requires cities' definition of household to increase how many unrelated people can live in a single dwelling unit. So the number of unrelated people that may live in a single dwelling unit increased from four to five, but not more than one person per bedroom, and that limitation does not apply to certified recovery houses. So that was change in the definitions in, in zoning. Another thing was the regulation of multifamily residential and duplexes. The problem we had in our regulations is that our regulations have always required larger minimum lot sizes for duplex and multifamily residential uses. For example, in a certain zone, it might be that for a single family, you need 5,000 square feet. For a duplex, you need 7,500. These regulations are in conflict with state law now, because state law, since 2023, has been saying that if a use is permitted, it's permitted. You can't add special rules to certain things without making it a special use permit. So, in order to maintain this, these larger lot areas, or duplexes and multifamily, and even the density requirements for multifamily, we're proposing making these things special use permits. And it seems a little bit like this change is in conflict with the goal of streamlining, streamlining housing production, but it's balanced by other regulatory changes like the ADUs. And it seemed to be the only way to keep those standards in our regulations without being illegal. There's been case law that come to that conclusion too, from, from what I understand here. And new criteria were created in the zoning regulations that spelled this out. The next slide has other smaller changes to comply with state law, things like changing the special permit, hearing notifications to meet the law, referring to trailers as manufactured homes, eliminating, eliminating several requirements for zoning officer review in favor of established review processes allowed through law. A lot of times in the regulations, it'll say, you can do this with the zoning officer's review, but it's going to be something more like a process that's spelled out, like land development, land development review in the regulations. There's the addition of a maximum floor area of 3.0 in all the districts. That's just something, almost like a safeguard against overly large buildings on a lot, if that should ever occur. Also exemption of two uses from section 19139's current limit of one residential structure per lot. So we have this existing rule in zoning that says residential use can only have one structure per lot. You can't have two houses on a lot. We have to exempt ADUs from that, because in theory you could have a detached ADU and a house. And another thing that is not in the state law, but that's recommended here, is the number two on the bottom of that slide, where exempt properties in the R5 multifamily district from this requirement. And that's to allow different multifamily types, like townhouses, and not limit multifamily to just one large building. Because if you can only have one residential building per lot, when you allow multifamily, you're forcing it all into one big building. So that's not a change required by state law, that's just something that really the zoning officer recommended as a recommended fix to something there. There's one non-zoning ordinance amendment in all of this, which is to change the Code of Ordinance as Chapter 2, Division 7, which regulates the Planning Board. It clarified the board's responsibility over development plan reviews and unified development reviews per state law. This is in state law anyway, it just says that they have those responsibilities, which they already, they're already doing. As far as next steps, like I said, the state just passed a new round of land use laws, so we'll have to bring those before you in the future. Continue work on some of these other draft changes that I mentioned here. We'll also have to amend the zoning map to conform to the comprehensive, the new comprehensive plans future man, land use map. That's something that we're supposed to do within 18 months of approving the new plan. And on another note, online permitting for land use applications is required by, it's actually October 1st, not 31st. And that's something that the state is, is working with us on. They're managing that project for all the communities in the state. When people apply for the Planning Board and other land use applications, we'll be able to do that online.
Don't we, don't we do that in OpenGov now?
We do for billing permits and zoning permits, but not planning.
But we can use OpenGov as that platform?
Yeah, it will be that platform. So it should be more convenient for everyone involved. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
So we, we have had a few meetings on this. We did have a lengthy workshop, which was here in this chamber and livestreamed. So before we go out to public comment, anyone want to say anything from the council? Obviously, we can come back and say something before we vote. We had the motion and second on the floor. That was just to start the public hearing. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing to those here in the chambers. Anyone like to come forward and speak on this specific issue as has been presented? Yes, sir, come right up. Just give me name and address and.
My name's Christian Scully. I own and work with a company called Blue ADU.
Okay, welcome.
345 Taunton Avenue, East Providence.
Welcome.
Obviously, this is an interesting topic. To me personally, we help people design and build accessory dwelling units. We definitely agree that there's a housing crisis. That's why these laws were put forth. And the reason Barrington and Providence eliminated their lot size requirement for detached accessory dwelling units was because the whole point of the law is to increase housing production. And there are already restrictions in place in existing zoning regulations. We believe that they're already restricted by parking and by setbacks and by lot coverage. So if you require parking, then not every lot can accept a new detached structure. If you have a lot coverage percentage requirement, then if you have a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot lot, and the house already takes up X percent, and there's already a garage, whatever, and you can't add more to that lot without exceeding the lot sizes, lot coverage requirement, then they already wouldn't be able to build a new detached unit. So we feel that limiting it to 7,500 square feet just kind of seems like an arbitrary line. Why not 7,000? Why not 8,000? You know, we think about the property owners that are, let's say you have two identical 5,000 square foot lots, for example, in East Providence, identical homes, identical lot sizes. The one on the left has an existing detached garage. They want to make that into an accessory dwelling unit. Under state law, it's existing, they could. Their neighbor wants to build a detached garage. It fits into lot coverage, it fits into setbacks, and fits into all the zoning requirements. They can legally build a new detached garage. They then sell the house. And three years later, the new homeowner says, I have an 80-year-old mother I need to provide a home for. We would like to convert our garage that we purchased into an ADU. Well, can they do that? We think that they should be able to do that. Let's say that those two same property owners, the one had the existing detached garage, and the neighbor doesn't have the existing garage. They want to build a garage with a loft over it to house their aging parent, to make a multi-generational household. And we believe that that does not increase the visual density. So the whole idea behind accessory dwelling units is to increase housing production while not increasing the visual density of a neighborhood. It's perfectly typical for a neighborhood to have a garage. So if you build a structure that looks like a garage, and the neighbor already has a garage, why should we be limiting that homeowner to be able to take care of their family, either by housing a parent, or an adult child, or, you know, 30% of homeowners are cost-burdened in housing? Maybe they do want to rent it out. They should have that right. It's their property, they want to build the identical garage as their neighbor. Who cares if there's somebody living it? That's our view, is that they should be able to make use of that space. It doesn't increase, it's not like putting up an equal-sized house. So it's really not increasing density, it's density minimized. It's, it's, it's taking a house with a garage and building a house with a garage. You know, that, that's our view. So our view is that, that 7,500 square foot rule, it kind of doesn't make a lot of sense to us, because where do you draw the line? You know, we understand that it came from the requirements for, the existing requirements for duplex. But if the goal is to increase housing production and help families take care of their, their parents, take care of their kids, and, and yes, generate rental income. parents, take care of their kids and, and yes, generate rental income, we should allow, it, it, it doesn't seem as fair to us. We've had a lot of people reach out that want to take care of their parents and we go, well, we don't know if you can, you know? They just want to build a garage. We don't, we know you can build a garage and if it looks like a garage, we don't know if they're going to let you house your parent in even though state law says that you should be able to and the idea behind accessory dwelling units says that you should be able to. So anyway, that's our take on it and.
Keith, you have a response to that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I would have an issue with the minimum lot size going away for that. Now, the state law does allow, no matter what your lot size is, that you can have one of these for disabled family members. So that is some other, another time that can be allowed. Although that's a specific case, it gets complicated like what happens when the family member isn't there anymore and there's this unit there. It does make it more complicated. But yeah, it's true. I mean, the 7,500 or the 20,000 or whatever the lot size is, is a bit, is a bit arbitrary. And there will have to be the other requirements that have to be met with these.
They can ask for a variance, right? They can come in and just say, can, we want to build, can we get a variance?
Right.
So the process is still the same.
It would be like if we had the limit of 7,500, someone has 6,000, could apply to the zoning board with that.
Yeah. And if it's appropriate, it would go through.
Prove hardship to the board.
And everything else would have to comply, all, all other, parking and.
Right, right.
So could, could be done through variance.
Could ask for a variance.
Could ask.
Right.
But as the gentleman saying, you know, that could be denied.
Right. There's standards that need to be met. I, I will, we have met with this gentleman about two weeks ago and we've had this discussion. There is, in my opinion, the law is not, the state law is not really crafted that well because of the situation that he indicated with the two houses next together. It was the issue of the term existing. This, you know, it's a policy decision of the council. You could, again, Providence and Barrington, I was shocked when I heard that Barrington went down to zero. But that's a policy decision that this council could make. The rationale, even though Keith said it was arbitrary, the rationale of, from the planning perspective of 7,500 square feet was based upon the, that's a requirement for the duplexes. So we kind of just mirrored that because duplex is more than one house on a lot, right?
Similar.
So it's similar. So again, but that's just a recommendation that you could go down to zero if you want.
I'm fine with the 75. Yes, you may.
The only difference that we see between the, the fact that it's a duplex on 7,500 square feet is that it's really comes down to the word accessory. So accessory structure, there's a whole section in the zoning ordinance for sheds and pools and anything that is defined as an accessory use. So we feel that as long as it meets those requirements, as long as it's X amount of feet from the, the property sides and as long as it doesn't exceed lot coverage and pervious, you know, surface coverage, it, it falls under the same category of accessory. So it's, it's a bit different from duplex. So having it just mold into the same thing. And just a note on the variance topic, you know, a lot of these homeowners, they don't have a ton of money. They're trying to reach out to us to, mostly it's for creating multi-generational households. So it's caring for, we just signed on a new one today in Barrington, actually, where it is a lot less than 20,000 square feet. They have an 84 year old mother and they wanted to put her in the home with her and take care of her so they don't have to put her somewhere else. And now because Barrington lowered that standard, we can now do that and, and that family has a solution for their, their parent.
I'm sorry, you, you can't speak for me. You'd have to come forward and use the microphone because the meeting is recorded. So if this gentleman's done, I would ask if there are any other comments from anyone? If so, please come forward.
So I think just before this young lady comes up, I just, so Barrington, I think, and I think I know is, is very different than the city of East Providence in that it doesn't have dense pockets, like the center of the city is very dense and already has very small lots as it is. I mean, you will find pockets of double lots that they're not utilizing with other accessories. When we go out into, you know, either direction, they, some of the lots do get bigger in the Ken Height area and some of them in Ward 1, but not to where, you know, if we have a zero, then you're going to have people in the center of the city or even some that live in other parts of the city that don't have lot, large lots trying to now build. And I just, again, with the parking situation that we already have, if you have the space, that's great. I'm, I'm all for it. I know we have tons of housing that are going up throughout the city. They're not in people's backyards per se, so it doesn't meet that keeping your family in the same property. But it does, it doesn't fit for everybody or every community. And I know Providence, again, is a different, a different type of a city to begin with. So a lot of the things that they do there don't work in this city respectfully, but I do appreciate, you know.
All right. And we'll get back to council comments, but right now, please proceed. Just name and address for the record.
I'm Beth White. I live in Comfort to Sutcliffe Circle and I had to get up here and make a presentation about accessory dwelling units. Originally here for chicken. But my question was just what percentage of our lots are even at 7,000 square feet? What does this even impact before we just make the, like do that math first?
Let's say Riverside, we got very small lots.
By a lot of East, the first standards of East Providence neighborhoods, it's a decent sized lot. I don't know the number or percentage. By East Providence standards, it's a decent sized lot where a lot of the lots in the center of the city probably wouldn't beat that. But I don't have a real percentage.
7,500, yeah, that's a.
For this, for this part of the city and certain parts of Riverside, like Councilman Lawson mentioned.
Yeah, there's not a lot in the center of the city that's 7,500.
Right. And, and the policy is the policy. If you follow it, you know, no matter what, you don't need to know the number of, of lots. If it applies, it applies. I'm sorry, you can't speak without using the microphone because it's a legal question. Right? But you're welcome to come back and sure. I don't want our city solicitor to get, get us in trouble.
It, it does make sense if you're setting a zoning limit on how many accessory dwellings, how big the lot is to understand how many lots we have at various sizes. So if we don't have many lots at 7,000 feet above that that qualify, we have a problem. So we should understand what percentage of houses have what lot and what, like what decision are we even making? It's arbitrary 7,500 feet. We don't even know how many lots qualify, but we should know that first and say this percentage of that, this, this percentage is this, these houses qualify, these don't. Do we have the right standard? Ask that question before we just start saying things.
Anyone else here on the public?
I mean, I think the number should be, I mean, again, I think it should be like 5,000 square feet because that's probably the average in the city. I mean, we want to help, you know? We've had two issues that tonight that talk about, you know, what spaces can occupy everything. And I, I want, want to take care of human beings and I, even in my ward, there are some, you know, there's some large ones, but probably you're looking at 5,000, you know, anywhere from 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots in, in my ward. Granted, there's going to be some that are going to be double and triple that, but when we come down to this and we, we, we have two social issues in front of us. And for me, human beings, we got to take care of our fellow man. We have a housing crisis right now in the state, in the country, and we can go on and on as to why there are. But if we ought to take care of our fellow East Providence people, and I've said it all along about, and I said this the last time with Keith, how do we get older people who don't need four bedroom houses anymore, but still want to live in the city? This is what we have to, this is what we have to strive for. We want to keep people living in the city and 5,000, I, I think the number should come down to, my, my personal thing, it should come down to 5,000 and build. And the other gentleman could probably tell us how much, if you want to call it a tiny house, how much per square foot it would cost. But I've done enough research on there and I've talked to most of you on here that you can fit two and three bedroom houses, five, 600, 700 square feet in today's, you know, engineering and that expert could probably tell you more. But we, we really should, I don't know if we go down to zero like Barrington and Providence, but I think the number should be like five.
So 75 might not be the best, but five is better than zero.
I think five's better than zero. I think we need to get there and.
Mike?
My, I, I think we need to do, I mean, the problem with the city and is we have an aging population. We talked about it. How do we keep the, you got to take care, you got to take care of where you came from. You got to take care of those people. And how do we bring the new people in? This is the way to do it. And.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Not yet.
It's emo, it's emo.
I know it's emotion, but I.
It's emotion.
Clear, this is a public hearing.
I would love.
You are, you are allowed to change that if you.
I would love to change it to five.
So Keith, what is your opinion on going to 5,000?
I'm fine with going to five. I think that would probably be a benefit, all things considered.
Yeah.
Councilman? I think 75, what they proposed, you can still get a variance.
It's a variance. So if somebody, if somebody doesn't want to do it.
The other thing is, this is an ordinance. If we're finding out that people with 5,000 square are coming in, it's an ordinance, we can change it.
But variances can be denied.
Yeah.
And if they're denied, there's usually a reason.
It might just be anti-ADUs.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you think our zoning board is anti?
I, I don't.
You think that they would vote against?
Not the current one, but you know, years down the line.
You can't legislate people's thoughts like that.
I do, I do want to.
We want to leave, we've talked about this before. We want, and we've done a good job, this council, of making the city better placed than where we left it. So you just answered the question. We're going to, we don't know who's, what's the makeup of those five people on that zoning board moving forward. So to leave our mark to make this city a better place, I think it's 5,000. Then, you know, that, that way, we always, you always talk about taking care of townies, taking care of townies. Well, I want to take care of townies and the best way, the 5,000 is probably the average sized lot in the city. And that's what we got, I mean.
But do we know that's the average size?
I'm pretty, I bet it's, I bet it's more towards 5,000 than any, you know, any center of the city.
And what about the neighbors that have concerns about parking and other things? You want to bring it down to five?
So hang, hang on everyone. So Mike and Keith, so logistically, legally, if there were a change in that number, we would have to have another?
No.
It could be changed tonight.
Could be changed tonight because this is the zoning ordinance, one passage only.
One passage, okay.
Public hearing.
So we can continue.
Sure.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Oh, about the size of the ADUs, the size of the ADUs are limited. It's on page 46, a two bedroom, it shall be no longer than, excuse me, it shall no, be no larger than two bedrooms and a two bedroom ADU shall be no larger than 1,200 square feet or 60% of the floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. So it's there, they can't put another 1,200 square foot.
Right.
We're talking about five, you know, if we're talking in that number, we're talking, it just did my mouth in the head real quick. We're talking about five, 600 square foot maximum.
Studio could be, yeah, a studio could be 900 or, or 60% of the floor area of the principal dwelling. So you, you can't put literally two huge houses on one lot. But there are, there are limits, so just by the point.
So in, in average, and I just did this real quick, you know, the, in, I just, again, I just did my ward and the average Cape and, you know, Cape and, you know, Colonials, the average Cape comes out to 1,600, almost call it 1,700 square feet. So then if you take that percentage, what you said, now we're down to like I, the number I'm talking about of five, 600 square feet when you just said, when you just gave that number detached, that's what I'm saying. So we're not, we're not talking about, you know, putting another, like you said, another thousand square foot house on it and everything.
Good. Do you want to add to this?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you. I would add in addition to your point, sir, about it being the 60%, limited to 60%, but remember also that you're additionally limited by lot coverage. So if the lot, let's say, for just, for example, was 4,000, just for example, if you were over the lot coverage, you wouldn't be able to do it. It already is restricted. And I'd also like to add that while you're talking about five, 600 square feet, which is a great size for a small studio or, or even a one bedroom, we're doing plenty of those, we're also seeing a lot of, of existing garages that are 250 to 350 square feet. And essentially they're designing a large, comfortable hotel room, basically size, you know, it's got a full kitchen, it's got a bathroom, then it's a large open studio. That's often for an elderly parent. Now, I can speak from personal experience. What actually got me into this industry was my wife and I wanted to take our detached garage, not in East Providence, but this was before the state law was passed, and we wanted to convert it for a living space for my mother-in-law. We had to go for a variance. The variance, uh, uh, the zoning board, they just flat out denied us and said, well, you already can do it under the state law at the time, which said for elderly and disabled. They've since gotten rid of the term elderly, which is interesting. But they said you can already do it under state law, but when she's done with it, you have to rip it out. We were like, we can't spend $50,000, you know, converting this garage to a nice space and then she's done with it and we have to, why wouldn't we add it to the housing stock? Like, and why do we have to burn money down, you know, just to take care of our parent? So that's kind of where it came from. So there are, while there are situations where they would be able to do five, 600 square feet, 7, 800 square feet, if the law and the lot coverage allow for it, a lot of times it's in these existing smaller garages. Now, to your point about, you know, there's parts of the city that are already dense, I would just suggest that in those dense part of the cities, is it okay if they build a garage? If the garage fits within the lot requirements for accessory structures?
So most already have, most already have garages. So they're, they're, they would be looking to just convert a, a pre-existing structure, which they certainly can under state law.
That's a great point.
But it's very different than now building a new, which they probably would not qualify for because of the lot size.
But if they did qualify for building a garage.
Or the coverage.
Right. But you just said that most of them have garages. If someone did qualify for building a garage, should they be allowed to convert that garage just the same as their neighbor whose garage existed?
So they're, they wouldn't, they wouldn't now be able to, so all these, no.
I'm not saying under state law, I'm saying.
No, no, in general, so in, in general, just in general, none of, the, the center of the city is a very old part of the city. So none of the houses nor garage or other accessories even conform to today's zoning or code. So nobody, everybody's on top of each other. There are no setbacks from property lines. You are on your neighbor's property line, your garages. So they, if they were to tear it down, they would not be able to put it up. So if you have it, save it and convert it. Otherwise, it's not happening.
Yeah. So that's a great example of how it's already limited by, by zoning restrictions, by existing by existing zoning restrictions.
Well, it's, yeah.
Where you don't even have to get into lot size. Because like you said, if there are, they can't meet the setbacks. If they can't meet the lot coverage,
Right.
It's a moot point, you can't do it. We can't help you do it.
Right.
You know? But if they could, man, it's a shame to tell them no if their neighbors got one and their lot is large enough and they can meet setbacks and they could build a garage. Man, it's a real shame to say, sorry, you can't take care of your parent. So that's kind of the, the angle we're, we're coming at.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken yet that part of the public hearing? One more request, is there anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing, back to council comments or the director's comments. Do you have an overall summary, Keith, after hearing the discussions?
No, I mean, we appreciate your consideration here. To me, I think, you know, the, the five thousand does make sense.
You see any harm to the city by going to the five thousand?
I don't, because of all the other zoning regulations that are in play with something like this.
Okay.
It still might be difficult, the majority of people looking to do a detached construction like that in their backyard.
So I make the motion to decrease it down to five thousand square feet. Whatever, Rego, I'm going, oh, you got, all right, what?
So motion by Council Vice President Rego to, uh, decrease the number from, was it seventy-five to hundred to, uh, five thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Souza, under discussion, uh, the solicitor?
Yes, so I just want to make it clear, in your motion, um, I'm, I'm looking at page forty-six of eighty-four, where it's under the ADUs of seventy-five hundred squares, seventy-five hundred square feet. We're going to reduce that to five thousand. I also want your motion to reflect that we have the authority to change it anywhere else that we need to change it, uh, consistent with that, because I don't want to pick, I can't pick it out every five, so just want to make it clear that we, we will change it.
Change it wherever
We need to, to conform with that number.
You know, I used to make your life difficult.
I know, you did. I was, I was all relaxed because I was on vacation, but now I'm all stressed out again.
So
So you'll add that to your motion?
Wherever, wherever it's noted, from seventy-five to five thousand.
And I think it might be only one place, but I, I defer to Keith.
I believe it's that one place, but it's a good point to just call it out.
And it's okay for the second on the motion, okay. Other discussion, the council. If not, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, would you please, on just the amendment, uh, call the role of the council? This is on the amendment as just proposed.
Councilman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman Lawson?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rego?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Roderick?
Aye, that amendment passes, uh, five-zero. Now, on the overall plan, is, is there other discussion or a motion?
Thought there was a
There was initially
Do we need a new one because of the amendment?
Yeah, we should do it because
We should
Second. Motion by Councilman Fogarty to accept, seconded by Councilman Lawson. Madam Clerk, please read the role.
I'm sorry, what was that motion by?
By, uh, Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Councilman Lawson. And just read the, uh, role of the council.
Councilman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman Lawson?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rego?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Roderick?
Aye, and it passes five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ace.
Thank you, Keith, for hearing, thank you for those who spoke tonight.
Keith, I went well, I went good on you tonight, right? It was nice and, you know, nice and relaxed.
Oh, he'll get you at some point.
Budget season's coming.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
New business, Mayor Communications Chief of Staff, Patricia Rizendi.
Good evening, council. I will make this very quick.
Thank you.
We have, um, I know I, on the first item, we have the nine-eleven ceremony that we have every year. We, I did mark that it was time to be determined, but we have set a time for ten a.m. We will start publicizing that. Obviously, we'd love to invite the council, members of the community, to, um, take part in that ceremony as we do each year with our police and fire.
Thank you.
We also, in your packet, you have the letter to, to the council regarding the EPP TMA contract, our managerial, um, union contract. I don't need to necessarily read that into record, right? Okay. In addition, um, and Councilman Fogarty, if you'd like to speak more on this, but we have the Vincent's Bermuda dedication unveiling September sixth, from noon to two, with the rain date of September seventh, we're asking the community to
Sure, I think Councilman Fogarty would take advantage tonight of maybe those viewing, um, if you want to just
Yeah, I mean, it's been
Reiterate.
It's been shared and it's, uh, in honor of Vincent's Bermuda, Vinnie, and, uh, Trish and administration, everybody involved has been very helpful. So hopefully the weather cooperates, I've been keeping an eye on it. But it looks okay for Saturday, so thanks for doing this, Trish, and everybody in the community. All, all are welcome, of course, so thanks again.
Happy to collaborate with the clerk and council. In addition, we have our July capital and finance expenses, which is also included in your packet. I do have one, two, three, four, five proclamations. Would you like me to?
No, I would just like you to read the headings of what they are.
So we, uh, included in your packet is the twenty-twenty-five Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, the twenty-twenty-five Brazilian Independence Day proclamation, our twenty-twenty-five Alzheimer's Awareness Month proclamation, our Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month proclamation, also a very important one, and as well as our Childhood Cancer Awareness Month proclamation.
All of these are, are very meritorious and I would hope that, um, council members and others in the community, when available, could, could participate.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief of Staff. Next item.
Reports of other city officials. Number one, request to approve residential handicap parking sign for ninety-five Ivy Street, East Providence, Rhode Island, zero-two-nine-one-four.
So this is, um, came as a request, uh, from a resident, um, in the ward who was needing access, um, directly in front of his residence due to no parking already on, in the area and then overcrowding and not being able to access or having good access with his vehicle due to his, um, inability, um, mobily to, to move around.
Sure, and it's been recommended by city administrators, there are motion. Councilwoman Souza moves passage.
Second.
Second by the rest of the council, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next item.
Councilman Lawson, do you have anything for the school committee?
September ninth, they will be voting to finalize their budget. If, uh, you've been watching, following along, it's tough. Lot of tough choices, you know, unfortunately, there's only so much that they can work with. And, um, I commend every member of the school committee and Dr. Faran for their diligence. And it's tough, it's tough. We, we need teachers in the classroom, support staff, we need the specialist. And we can only do so much with what's there. And I commend them for what they're doing and I plan on fully supporting their budget request. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Lewis, you want to add anything or you're all set? Thank you. Thank you. Next item.
Introduction of ordinances for discussion and possible vote. Number one, in ordinance and amendment of chapter eighteen of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, is amended by adding thereto the following section, eighteen dash three zero seven, no parking Providence Avenue, both sides, from Sunset Avenue North for fifty feet, Providence Avenue East Side from Sunset Avenue South for fifty feet, introduced by Council President Roderick.
Thank you, I'm introducing this on behalf of the recommendations of our DPW Director. Also, you see there were attached memos of the Police Department and based upon resident requests.
Passage.
Passage is moved by Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Council Vice President Rego and Councilman Lawson. Councilwoman Souza, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item.
An ordinance and amendment of chapter eighteen of the revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section one, subsection B of section eighteen dash two-six-nine, entitled Stop and Yield Intersections Designated When Stops Required, is amended by adding thereto the following. Providence Avenue Northbound Traffic at Sunset Avenue, Providence Avenue Southbound Traffic at Sunset Avenue, sponsored by Council President Roderick.
Move passage.
Passage moved by Councilman Fogarty. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Lawson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. unanimous, thank you. Next item.
An ordinance and amendment of chapter eighteen of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, is amended by adding thereto the following. Section eighteen dash three zero seven, no parking Lincoln Avenue, North Side from Crescent Avenue, Westerly, one-seventy-five feet, sponsored by Council President Roderick.
Once again, similar requests coming from residents. And as you can see, and I'll just take a second here to say that all of these are in an area of very, very narrow streets. You see statistics were compiled about how many accidents have happened at these intersections, et cetera. We received all the reports, I, uh, agree with them. Is there a motion?
Yep, motion.
But one, one
Yes, question.
Where is Lincoln Avenue Riverside?
Yes.
Where's Crescent?
Crescent View. Lincoln is the square.
I know Lincoln, that's the Lincoln Bar. Where's Crescent Ave?
Crescent View, Crescent, uh, yeah, Crescent Ave, there's a Crescent Avenue different from Crescent View.
Right, but I'm trying because
There's Lincoln Avenue North from Crescent Avenue Westerly, one-seventy-five feet.
Trying to think where, that's my neighborhood I grew up. It's, it's trees and it's presidents.
A field review was conducted by DPW staff. Lincoln Avenue measures twenty feet wide, which is narrow for two-way traffic on both sides. Crescent is right in there, right? In that area of Lincoln, there is a Crescent Avenue. Residents at one-hundred-and-one-oh-two Lincoln Avenue were consulted. Both expressed support and requested implementation. So it's right in that area. I'm sorry, you can Well, I think the DPW Director does also.
So on the, on the map, Lincoln goes all the way down and then Crescent comes up and turns over to Jackson Ave.
There is a Crescent in that area. To use the vernacular, it's called the maze.
All right, yeah, no, I see, it's
See it? We see it here on the map.
Yeah, because it's, it's presidents and trees. It's odd that that one is there, okay. I'll second.
Yep, yep, first passage, if there needs to be clarification, anyone who has different information, bring it forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have.
An ordinance and amendment of chapter two of the revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled Administration, is amended by adding thereto the following. Article eleven, East Providence School Bus Violation Detection Monitoring System Fund, sponsored by Councilman Lawson.
Councilman.
This is the adjustment we talked about. Instead of taking the speed camera money, we take this new revenue that's not been baked into the budget and we feed the school building project. So that way, we, we just discussed in an executive session how much money we spent on these schools. We got to make sure we got money to maintain them. So, um, basically, all this says is that the new violations from the speed camera, not the speed camera, the, um, stop signs would be fed into the, um, school building fund. And this would be, uh, the entire amount that the city receives from these.
Council Vice President.
I've gone back and read the state law and this is a little different than the speed cameras or red light cameras, how they're generated. Like, right now, you speed by St. Margaret's or any of the schools, or you go by a red light at Catamarque Boulevard and it clicks and the police officer just has to look on it and okay's it. But under this state law, what they've done in the past, the school buses, the school bus cameras running the red lights at schools, you go to the traffic tribune, you know, with the police officers. So what they've done is they've added more money, the state gets more money, but they've taken the responsibility away from going to the traffic tribune, you know, in Warwick or Cranston. And they've given it to the Police Department. So for this to work, and we need to do, that's why, we need to do more research. I know our Police Department has to, an officer has to sit there and look at it, then issue the ticket all along. So this is going to cost us more money than before. It's going to cost us more time with police officers.
Which they're going to do no matter what. But this is just saying the money that we get from these violations goes into the building fund. The, the process you're talking about is going to happen either way.
Yeah, but the process is now going to cost the city more money because now you have an officer where before it went, it went, school bus, everything went, the school buses all went down to Cranston.
Right, but how much more, they're already looking at pitches of speeding. How many violations are you anticipating that's going to take, how much money?
Now you have to write up the whole, we don't write up any of those tickets.
I, I understand that.
With the, with the, with the traffic tickets. We don't write any of them up.
I understand that.
But now we have to do the whole, the police officer
A police officer looks at every traffic violation and has to sign off on it.
All he does is hit the button. But now, you have to start the whole process. He has to technically write the ticket, he has to go through the whole process. This is more than just hitting a button.
So, I'm, I'm missing your point, why shouldn't the funds go into the schools?
Well, first, we don't know, we don't know where the number's going to be. And why are we, how do we know how much it's going to cost the city to have, you know, police officers there? I'm, I'm all for, you know, down the line, seeing where we, you know, where we go.
So, well, I, I'm going to move back. If you want to be against it, just vote against.
So hang on, hang on a second. I, I think what, what we're getting at overall is, we don't know anything yet. I don't think there's been one
But we know revenue is going to come in from these violations.
There should be some.
And that's all this says, is when the revenue comes in.
But I think we should wait and see what kind of money comes in. And do we want all of it to go? And we still have, you know, a city to operate. Now, remember
Talk and action, we talk about supporting schools.
Let me finish, because that's my next comment. While we all say we support schools, I'll stand pat that no one has supported schools more than me from my time as a former school board chair, my thirty years working in the school department, and my time now supporting schools on, on all aspects of, of their operation. It was my proposal, and I'm not a person that pats myself on the back, I think you know me. But it was my proposal with all of your support that took that extra three million dollars from the high school bond issue and said it's going to the school department, all of it. They still have that, they have that three million dollars. I don't think they've spent a lot of it yet.
Two-point-eight and they're going to come at us with, um,
There'll, there'll be more things. And we've supported every budget since I've been elected, two terms, we have supported every school budget. To the point where certain school leaders even said last year, we're, we're pretty good. You don't have to give us any more, we'll get by. But we gave them more. So we can still do that. I just think right now it's premature to say, let's take all this money and throw it in that fund. That fund is already pretty healthy.
Okay.
And I, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, at some point say, okay, we got X amount of dollars in, let's put most of it, you know, whatever, to the schools.
I'm one of five, I make a motion to pass this.
Why you guys don't want it? That's, that's just my take.
We had, like, like the president said, we have two-point-eight million and points I was bringing out. We, obviously, it's public safety. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm, after reading the state law and how it's, you know, written and everything, maybe the money should go towards, you know, the, the, you know, towards the Police Department in their budget because they're going to be the ones. And I'm not, you know, they're the ones that are going to be overseeing to be overseeing it and everything, and, you know, two point eight, and we manage it, and hopefully further councils down the line, and it's an interest-bearing account, that, and as long as the school department stays on top of their, you know, maintenance fees or, you know, everything that has to happen, then, in, in their maintenance plans, and I believe, thank God, we have the right superintendent. I know at times, you know, you know, a lot of people like to beat the superintendent up, and shame on those people, but that's another story for another day. I think she won't let the buildings deteriorate, and hopefully, future.
But she needs money in order to not let them deteriorate.
We have two point eight.
And how long do you think this is going to last, buddy? They're going to be dipping into it now. But we keep supporting them.
How many, how many tickets?
We'll get your motion right now, but let me add this too, there's the Martin Bond issue, and I attend those regular meetings, and they're ahead of schedule, there may be more than that bond issue that I would propose would go to the schools. But anyway, that's a motion by Councilman Lawson to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, please read, read the role of the council.
I'll have it.
Councilman Fogarty?
Someone add a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Comment.
My comment is that I agree with Mr. Lawson's theory on giving the monies towards the schools, and I agree with that should happen, but not all of it. As, as I said before, it's all public money, public community safety money. So give the project, show it, and we'll, and we'll put the money towards it like Council President Roderick has said. So I'm a nay.
Continue the role.
Councilman Lawson?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rego?
Nay.
Councilwoman Souza?
So I've seen this play out already with the speed cameras. When we first started, and it was brought before the council, it was promised to go for public safety and everything involved with public safety, and that was the pitch that got the council on board, and then it spiraled into something else, and I commend the councilman of the fourth ward for wanting to delegate, to, to act, to allocate this money to a specific place where it does what it's supposed to do. The revenue is coming because of schools, and at the expense of this children's safety, and so some of it should be allocated to that. I don't know a hundred percent, maybe not, but I think, again, with any ordinance, once the figures come in and we can reevaluate, we can then amend ordinances to change that. But I am in favor of the, the reason in why we're doing it, so I'm an aye on that.
Council President Roderick?
For the reasons stated, nay at this time, so the motion fails two to three.
And these, just for the record, these aren't new, the people, city has been getting, you know, money, and people have been getting fined by red light, you know, for school bus violations. This isn't something that just is brand new, this isn't like the speed cameras. And I want to commend a particular person who's brought this to the forefront, because safety is very important. So this is maybe like the speed cameras, but it's not, the red light violations have been a state law for twenty-five plus years, but I, you know, again, I want to commend an, you know, an individual who really fought for this, and, you know, made this become an issue for the safety of the children of the city.
Then do we know how much the city's been getting year on year, if this has been going on for, for twenty-five years? Because it's never, since I've been on the council, but in any report that I've seen.
Red light have been relatively new.
Red light cameras are the, this school arm cameras.
School, no, the school, like going through a red, you're going through a school bus when the flat, you know, when you.
We've never had.
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe we, well, we had a prior, I think the school department, by the way, the law indicated that's awarded by the school department. I know that when Chief Francisconey was here, they did sign a contract with a prior company to get that revenue, but with all due respect, it hasn't been twenty-five years, it's been maybe like the last four years.
No, but the state law.
State law's been around.
That's being state law, and, you know.
We're not getting revenue.
And those are, you know, and those are.
I haven't been getting as much revenue, I don't.
As much.
What's the number, what's as much?
I don't, I don't know. I know the percentage has changed under this new state law.
But, yeah, each city and town got a percentage of those, of those cameras.
Most of the money went to the state.
Eight, but the city did get some.
Yeah. We can, we can try to figure out the number, I, I think it's, since I've been here, there was a contract that was signed by the school department that I saw, and I don't know when that it was entered into, but it was at least while I was here, so at least seven years.
But we don't know what the.
It goes back before Chief Francisconey, I'm sorry.
Guys, we have to talk through the chair and one at a time, please.
We don't know how much.
Councilwoman Souza.
I personally don't know, but I'm sure the city does.
Yeah, percentage or an estimate of how much revenue, currently have an estimate of revenue, but I know that the former contract had twelve percent coming to the city, like twelve, twelve point five.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilman Rego, Councilwoman Souza, all in favor? Aye, ayes have it. Thank you all.